Okay, welcome to the Wayland School Committee meeting. We're going to call it to order at 6:02. We are being recorded by Wake Cam. The first thing we're going to do is a welcome and call to order, and then we'll move on to public comments. So we have all the members of the school committee here, and we have our administrators here as well. We've been starting our meetings recently with members of the school committee maybe sharing something about an event or something involving the schools that's happened since our last meeting, which I believe was two weeks ago. So if anybody wants to share anything, I will quickly start out. I went to the middle school musical, the Descendants musical, the other night, and the kids did a really great job. It was pretty impressive. I'm pretty sure when I was in middle school, we definitely did not have that level of talent. So it was pretty great to watch all of them, and they were all very supportive of each other and proud of themselves. It was fantastic.
That's great.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
It's always really impressive.
So I've yet to see Wayland Middle School play. I will be seeing a Walden one this weekend. My niece is the star, the lead of Shrek, right? So I get to go see that. But I did go to the Wayland Public Schools Foundation Spelling Bean. Dr. Graham was seated in my row between, after me and my son, who he kept talking to me while telling me how to spell all the words, right? While I was watching. But it was a super great event, and watching, the group I watched, was fun. It was a group of fourth graders, and it was a three-way tie at the end. So that was really kind of nice to see, that there were three groups of really great spellers who made it that far.
That's fun. I'll piggyback on that, because I was a judge in one of the rooms at the foundation, which Spelling Bean, which was always very fun. And in one group, this year they had, if you wanted to participate in Spanish, you could. So one of our groups, secondary groups, one of the teams got Spanish words, and everyone else had English words.
Oh, cool.
It was very impressive.
Were they the same words? Like the same English and Spanish words, or are they different?
No, they had a different list. Because you know how each team gets a different word?
Yeah.
And Christina from Locur, the Assistant Principal, she was the announcer. So she took over, like, the judging of that part, because they even spelled the words in the Spanish letters. And that was where it was. Erin was there, wasn't she? That year. It was like, we were like, oh.
We were grateful to have her.
Yeah, grateful to have her.
Fantastic. Any, anything else, anyone? No pressure, as always, but.
I'm feeling pressure, but I got nothing.
All right. Save it for next time.
Not today.
Yep. Okay. We'll go on to public comments. As always, when you come up for public comment, please provide your name and street address. Please be respectful with your comments and discuss what is in the purview of the school committee. Do we, if you're going to make public comment, can you raise your hand so we can just determine how many? Okay? All right. So the time limit for public comment will be three minutes. Feel free to come up here when you are ready.
Mr. Chair, I wonder if you'll help me. I don't hear well, so if you give me a hand signal when I'm getting close to my time, I'll gladly step down.
I will, absolutely.
You're welcome. I think I had a problem with you before on this, and it was innocent on my part. Thank you. So yesterday, I think most of you know that the Boston Globe did a story on Wayland. And in the story, they mentioned a very ugly truth, not an allegation, but a truth regarding the harassment and bullying of a new Wayland High School teacher of chemistry. And this was done by multiple teachers. It was also observed by students. Now, school committee policy clearly was violated, because school committee has very strict rules about harassment and bullying. So the teacher looked for help. They turned to their peers and got no help. They turned to the department chair and got no help. And then he, and then he turned to the WTE, the organization that is there primarily to protect the rights of teachers, and got no help. And finally, he turned to the administration of the high school and got equally no help. The sole person who stepped up to deal with someone being harassed and mistreated was Dr. Ezy. A formal complaint was filed with HR, who investigated and concluded that this outrageous behavior did not rise to the level of discrimination. But he did say this behavior represented the creation of a hostile environment and failure to properly support a new member of faculty. Dr. Ezy raised his concern about this in his monthly administration meeting. And what he said was, "We have school committee policy about this, and every one of us has an obligation to follow the protocols." So several people went behind his back directly to, I believe, the chair of the school committee, and accused Dr. Ezy of bullying and intimidating during that meeting. He was not informed about this complaint for two weeks, no notice. And during that time, chairman of the school committee conducted his own investigation, clandestine, I might add. He was looking for people who could confirm the false claim made against Dr. Ezy. Then a formal and expensive independent investigation was called and hired. And after the work was completely done, there was no evidence whatsoever to confirm that Dr. Ezy had acted unprofessionally or been violating the rules about bullying and intimidation. None. And to that, to this moment, am I at three?
Yeah, you're up. You're done.
I'm at three, or?
Yeah, you're at three.
Okay.
Yeah. I didn't get your name, which we need to record in a minute.
Yeah, I apologize for that. My name is John Pierce.
John Pierce.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
So, you're welcome.
Are there any other public comments? Okay?
I assume they came for a reason. Anybody come for a reason, or just to watch? Just to watch?
I think there's no public comment. Are there any other public comments?
Yeah, let's speak.
Okay.
I'll give others the opportunity first. In the Boston Globe, they reported that the school committee so far run a bill of $28,700 for a report. A report that the school committee said was an investigation of the matters of the October 13th meeting. If I spent that much money, went to a car dealership, and I spent that much money, and I came home, never got a car, my wife would probably ask me what I spent it on. I don't think anyone here would spend that money and not expect something in return. Do you guys have report? Anyone? Show of hands.
We're not doing Q and A.
I know.
Feel free to make your comments, but we're not responding.
So you guys said you were in a hurry to do it. You're in a rush to do it. There's an opportunity to do it right away. And we have months have gone by. Looked at the time, it could have been done December, January, February, March, April, we're almost into April. So there's no report. Why is there no report? So what's happened here? You got no report. I think the citizens of Wayland are entitled to report. I think we're entitled to an answer. We spent tax dollars. Everybody pays for that report. We'd like the report. I believe you guys have the, an oral presentation. You know what the report results are. You should share with the town. But you guys are operating in secret. Four open meeting law violations so far, and counting. And no report. You act in executive session, probably illegally, I think they'll be found, but you kept a secret. Executive session does not obligate you to keep a secret. Not executive session, any member of this committee can share the context in the executive session. You're welcome to it. Somebody should step up and do the right thing. So how did we get here? I think Dr. Ezy entered Wayland Schools in a hornet's nest. It was a buzzing hornet's nest when he came here. You had all kinds of problems the school committee hadn't resolved. And he got stung. There was problems on, before he left, we had, you know, those teachers who were, teacher at the high school decided that the student was sick, maybe deprived of the grade level, eight to 12 points per test, for being sick on a test day. One student reportedly missed his grandfather's funeral to make a biology test. What the hell is you guys teaching? By the way, the school committee seems to be missing its mission statement. If you go to your website, you click on mission statement, it's empty. Kind of tells you a little something. Nobody's noticed the mission statement is missing. So Dr. Ezy entered with a hornet's nest. Do we have time? Do these two of us?
Nope. Three minutes.
New rules?
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay. Move on to the next item. With special matter, so a discussion impossible vote to appoint the interim director of finance and operations. Perry, do you want to take that?
I am happy to do so. So I am coming to the school committee earlier than I had anticipated about this position. This was a job that was posted on March 17th. I've said this to you on multiple times, this is a position that I was maybe most worried about filling for a variety of reasons. It's an incredibly important position to the district. There are big shoes to fill, and there are a lot of open positions right now, and so there's a lot of competition for different positions. However, I had a candidate reach out to me directly. Given the qualifications of this candidate, I wanted to speak to them as quickly as possible. So I convened an interview team, met with the candidate, and I would like to recommend them tonight to the school committee. That candidate is Susan Botan. Susan worked in the district in this position for seven years, and with Tom leaving, I cannot imagine someone more qualified or capable than Susan coming to step into the role. In the interview with Susan, she expressed that she is nearing the end of her career, and as much as she has enjoyed working in Reading, the opportunity to return to Wayland and finish her career here resonated very powerfully with her. I cannot say enough positive things about Susan. I had the opportunity to work with her for three years. Given her experience, her qualifications, and her background in Wayland, I would recommend that the job title be changed from interim director of finance and operations to instead director of finance and operations. And I would request that the school committee authorize me to enter into negotiations with her for a multi-year contract. So I'm recommending Susan Botan for this position.
Okay. That's great.
Can I say that I was on the screening committee, as was Erin, and I personally, I spent time talking to Susan about, you know, she left. When she left, I was taking a sabbatical and not coming back. And I think we all felt that, I'll just speak for myself, very good that she's coming back for, she really wants to come back, and she's ready to come back. And yeah, she wants, she wants to be part of, part of this.
I will add that at the time that Susan left, we spent a lot of time trying to convince her to stay. Jeannie and I did. So I'm, I'm, I think she's certainly highly qualified, and like, we are very lucky that she wants to come back and work for us.
So nothing to do with qualifications, or Susan being a good person, nor like, someone who would be a great member of our team, but just a few logistical questions, because I want to make sure that whomever we're hiring, I don't want anyone to run into any of the issues that some people have run into in the past of not being accepted because of how things happen. So Perry, my questions for you are, how many candidates did we get for this position? And then of those, how many did we bring in to interview?
So Susan is the only person that we interviewed.
Okay. And then number?
Hold on, let me go look. I will tell you in school spring. I think I know the answer, but I just want to double check. And I should note that we did have a relatively long period during which the position was posted, so we could have, if we had not gotten the right candidate, we could have waited a little bit longer, but there are two other people who applied for the position.
Okay. And then, did they not have the qualifications, or what was the reason?
There are people who might have been interesting for us to look at. Susan was far and above any of the other people who applied for the position.
I guess, like I said, my concern is I don't want to make an issue for anyone coming into any position. I want consistency in our hiring practices and making sure that they fit with the policy listed. So whatever we do, I don't want to, I don't want to, like, I just want the public to feel good.
Yep.
Because there is so, there's a lot that we're filling, so.
Thank you. And so, school committee policy requires that we put together a hiring committee, and previously I came to the school committee and asked for your authorization to put together a hiring committee, which we did put together. I did accelerate the process more quickly than I might otherwise have for two reasons. One is my concern about being able to find highly qualified candidates. And second, Susan, I cannot imagine a candidate more qualified than Susan, especially given her experience in Wayland, to apply for this position. And so I wanted to move quickly, because I thought that she was the best person that we were likely to find. But thank you for clarifying that.
I also would say that, at least in my experience, Susan worked very well with two.
Could you speak up, please? We can't hear you.
Susan, Susan worked very well with two separate superintendents. So she worked under both Paul Stein and Dr. Janowski, and worked well with both of them.
So when I was on the finance subcommittee, Susan was the director of finance and operations. And I can say from working with her that she was, she was great to work with, someone who never gets flustered. No matter what happens, she's able to sort of maneuver the situation and, you know, get through it and figure things out. Very professional, and also very competent, and, you know, very caring and empathetic as well. I enjoyed working with her, and so I'm excited that you've brought her forward. This is very good news, so I think it's great.
And my last question, I guess, would be, so is there anything, because it was posted as an interim, was it posted as an interim? Is there anything that prevents us, because of how it was posted, from negotiating it as an actual, not an interim?
It's a great question. I asked the same question of council.
Okay, good.
And they told me that that would, that the committee has the ability to do that.
Thank you.
So our motion would just have to indicate that. Is that right?
Yes, it's for a director of finance and operations, not an interim director. If that's where the committee wants to go.
Okay.
The committee has the ability to do that.
Got it. Erin, do you have any comments?
I do.
Okay.
So like Jeannie said, I participated in, I don't know what you would call that, the screening committee?
Or the search committee.
Search committee. And I had worked with Susan years ago on a different, like, little committee. And I was really impressed with her, and I know everyone was so excited at the prospect of her returning. That was part of the search committee. But I was actually really thrilled that in her time, in her current district, she's actually really expanded her repertoire and abilities and her experiences. And I think she comes back to the table even more prepared to take on a lot of different kind of challenges that we have going on in Wayland right now. So I'm super excited. I can't imagine that we could find anyone more suited to take over Tom's shoes.
And, you know, you're very unflappable, too. I mean, we're really fortunate. We're very fortunate. Like, you're just very, like, and you said this when we interviewed you, you know, we, I think we probed several times, what would you do if? And you were like, well, I'd just talk to them. And we're lucky to have, you know, someone else who's like that as well. I think that's a really important quality, so.
Put that job aside.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if there, is there any other questions or discussion? If not, then someone should put together a motion.
All right. I will. I move that we authorize Perry as acting superintendent to enter into contract negotiations with Susan Botan for the director of finance and operations position.
Do we have a second? Erin? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? No one's opposed. Everyone's in favor. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. I should.
Thanks, Perry. Appreciate it. So the next item is a discussion impossible vote to appoint the acting superintendent. So I'll start out by talking a bit here, and then we can go into discussion. So as we know, Perry has been the acting superintendent, but is moving on at the end of June. We really appreciate everything, Perry, so I want to make sure, you know, I say that. But we do need a plan for our next steps. So what I want to tell the committee about is that Dr. Midge Connolly, who's currently the superintendent in Weston, reached out to me and expressed interest in Wayland. I scheduled a meeting with her, and I asked Erin to join me. So we met with her, and we talked through different things. The three of us met last weekend. We had a very good conversation. So what I'd like to do right now is maybe provide, you know, a summary of Dr. Connolly, so all of us can discuss and then talk about the plan for the next steps. So Dr. Marguerite, or Midge Connolly, has been in education for over 30 years. Initially a special education, initially a special educator, Dr. Connolly had been a school-based administrator at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. She spent the last eight years in Weston Public Schools, the first two as the director of student services, and then mostly recently as the director, as the superintendent of schools. Dr. Connolly's undergraduate degree is from Boston College in elementary and moderate special education, and she holds two master's degrees, one from Boston College in severe special education, and the second from Harvard University in administration, planning, and public policy. Dr. Connolly holds a PhD in curriculum and instruction from Boston College as well. A few highlights from the conversation that we had. She clearly has a lot of experience with special education. For example, she started the language-based program in Weston. She's been in education for 30 years and a superintendent for the past six years. And before being a superintendent, she had multiple different positions as director of student services, principal, vice principal, teacher, et cetera. Through the conversations, it's clear to me that she seems to prioritize communication that is effective and timely, while focusing on processes driven by observation, collaboration, and organization. For the upcoming school year, our district really needs healing and stability, and I believe that Dr. Connolly can help us with this. For tonight's discussion, I think we need to make a plan. I sent everyone on the committee her resume. Hopefully you had a chance to look at that. We can discuss our thoughts, and then we can put together a plan to start conversations with Dr. Connolly, further conversations with Dr. Connolly. So I was thinking, maybe Erin, do you, do you want to share some thoughts based on the conversations that we had?
Sure. So just to kind of reiterate Chris's point that we need some healing and some calming, I have to say that Dr. Connolly's presence was immediately calming. And she had kind of a soothing nature to her approach to our whole discussion. Something that really resonated with me as something that we need in our district is one of the things that she brought out as a really big part of a superintendent's role is supporting the administrators and the principals, so that they can best support their teachers, which ultimately trickles down to the best situation and scenario for our kids and our students, and the best environment for them to learn in. She really harped on building relationships within the community, and using that to assist with buy-in from team members to move things forward and make change. And the other, I think, biggest thing that resonated with me was how she described her transition into Weston as the superintendent. And it was, I needed to come in and really get, and these are my words, a little bit. I'm paraphrasing. The pulse on the environment and figure out, you know, what was needed and how I could be collaborative with the existing team before I could do anything. So one of the things that we talked about was the language-based learning classroom, and that, you know, we were interested in that, because that's one of the things that we did here, or are working on here. And so we said, oh, so you did that in your first year? And she was like, well, no. I, I came in, and I evaluated, and realized, like, we really needed to do this. And I worked with people to get them to understand and get on board, and took the time to move it forward. And I just thought that that was really important for us, and I think we need someone that's going to come in and assess, and also understand that we've been through a lot, and our teachers and our administrators have been through a lot, and our kids have been through a lot, and sort of have that at the forefront as they come in to look forward to what needs to be done. I can't imagine we could, I guess I could imagine, but I can't imagine how we could have a better scenario. She just, she was wonderful, and really seemed like something our district could use, someone our district could use on a lot of levels.
Okay. Does anyone have questions we want to go through, discussion?
I have a lot. I do have a lot.
Okay.
And it has nothing to do with Midge. I don't know her. I've never met her. I guess, again, it's a process to start. We, this is a very unusual process, and I know it's an unusual situation, but I feel like it's very odd for this to not come to the committee before meeting with someone. I'll start with that. Would her start date be the date Perry leaves? And then how does that set us up for any other issues that we have? Because will we be paying two superintendents, et cetera? So financially, what position does that put us in?
She's currently the superintendent in Weston through the end of this school year, so her start date would be July, July 1, once the school year ends.
But we're still paying Dr. Ezy, and we don't have an end date for that. So is there a scenario in which that could go beyond July 1st? Because that's not something we've discussed. So I guess it's a big financial ask without knowing, like, where the money's coming from, and asking the community to fund two superintendents for another full year without any end insight?
Well, we need to have a plan. We know that Perry's our current acting superintendent. We know he'll be leaving at the end of the school year, so we need a plan.
Yeah, that I get, but.
And so we also have leading Westwood and Weston, who will be looking for interim superintendents. So locally, there's a lot of need for superintendents, so.
And I get that, but I do have concerns about our budget, right? Because we are responsible for that to the community. So I want to make sure that when we make this decision, we're looking at that as part of it, and that's part of our planning ahead. And then I like the idea of looking at more than one candidate, because we're not considering things like diversity in doing this. We're not vetting anybody else. And this could be the best candidate, but I feel like the community should have input. We do need healing, and I want community buy-in. I don't want us in a really bad situation where the community's not going to accept someone because of the way they were brought in. I really think we, at minimum, need a full committee interview. Those are my thoughts right now.
I have a question.
Sure. Go ahead.
Do we know, sorry, do we know why she is leaving Weston and would want to come here as an interim? Do we ask that question? Do we know the answer to that question?
Yeah, I mean, my understanding is that, you know, various things in. things change in districts. She's been there for eight years. Districts change. And at this point, after being there for eight years and different changes, she's looking to move to another district.
So I think it is really important that we have a plan, right? Going forward, because there's a lot of people are asking, whether it's candidates interviewing for other positions or current administrators or families, what's going to happen? I mean, I heard this question last night at a meeting and asked me, what is going to happen come July 31st? So I think it's important we have a plan sooner rather than later. Because we don't know exactly. The one concrete thing we know is that Perry is leaving. Not July 31st, sorry, what did I say?
June?
Yeah, June 30th, July 1st. But we know Perry is leaving July 1st. That's the one thing we know. And so I think it's important we have a plan. And, you know, who knows what will transpire between now and then? But I think it's important we have a plan. And to your question about finances, I don't think we'll know exactly, right? Like, right now with a plan, right?
So I guess today, no? But I was under the impression that there were things that could change.
Perhaps, but we don't know, right?
But we don't know. But that's why I'm saying, like, what, I just, I have a problem saying to our community, it could be this much money or this much money and we actually don't have it in our budget. So like, I just have a problem doing that to taxpayers. That's all.
Yeah, I understand.
But we need a superintendent. We need someone in that position. I hear your issue, but I'm not so sure that it's sort of like, you know, just a side part of the overall issue that we're discussing.
So it's definitely part, but it's not like the only part. I agree completely.
So if we brought her in, it would be as an interim, one-year interim, right?
Acting.
Acting, one-year acting. Okay. And she is, she is good with that. That's, she knows that's the, like, she's not, is she interested in long-term or is she...
There hasn't been, like, a contract negotiation conversation that's today.
But she reached out to you about being an acting superintendent.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
It's not like it's a secret, right? To the rest of Massachusetts. That like, we're looking for someone. We're going to need somebody. Everybody knows he's leaving. Right? So, you know. I just feel like we need to look at more than one candidate. And everybody needs to look at them. And we need to follow some kind of process. And I do think they should be brought in front of the community, like our educators and our families. Like, I do think that they should at least have the opportunity to meet this person and ask a couple of questions. Because, like Erin said, like, there is healing that needs to be done. And I think it's important that we don't have a year where it's just like this again. We need to, like, move forward in some way, shape, or form.
So like, should we just address the elephant in the room? That, like, our hands are tied on certain things like that, given the state of what's going on? And that's likely not able to happen? So we're trying to work with what we got? And we need a plan. And waiting, we can't wait until Perry leaves on June 30th.
No, and I'm not saying wait till then, but I thought within a certain amount of time that there were things that might be changing, that's all.
Well, I think the main, the main point of discussion tonight is, I think, you know, the committee would want to sort of delegate to two members officially. This is our first opportunity to talk about this together. So the committee would want to delegate to two members to continue the conversations with Dr. Connolly. And then we can take it from there. So, but in terms of process, you know, I think we have to keep in mind that you don't apply the same exact process to an acting superintendent that you apply to, you know, hiring a permanent assistant principal or an assistant or a principal. Like, it's different. Superintendent is a school committee item. Other employees in the district are the administration's items. And this is an acting superintendent role. It's different. So I think we do need to keep that in.
So if we assign two people to it, what are we assigning these people to do? Continue conversations, but what is that conversation?
That's, that's, that's what we have just said.
And the committee is not allowed to all have a meeting with this person? With the candidate or not?
Well, we, we could ask to have her come.
We could, that would be part of the conversations.
Yeah, we could have her.
Yeah. If that's what the committee wants, then that's the conversation that we would bring.
Back to her.
Back to her.
Because, I mean, I know whoever is sitting in that spot, like, I'm going to be supporting because that's part of the role, in my opinion, of a school committee is to give a superintendent the support they need to do the things. Doesn't mean I'm always going to agree, as Perry's well aware. But it does mean that, like, we are, I will be sitting here next year and whomever is sitting in that chair, I will be supporting because I feel it's very important for a superintendent to have the support of the school committee. So I just...
I think Jess is right, that if, if, and I know I'm rolling off, so I'm kind of a lame duck, so, but I will just throw this out there, that it would be probably good for everyone to meet the person that is being considered. Right? So. I mean, I enjoy that too, but if I'm...
Yeah, we can, we can figure out what the committee is looking for and figure out a way to make that work.
Can I ask a question? So can we just, for the public, just review where we are with all these hirings? Can we, can we just review where we are? Maybe Perry, so we just said yes to Susan. I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. And, and so where are we with all the other positions that we were working on?
Just one second, let me pull them all up. So I will start with interim middle school principal. That is concluded. So Tyler Steffi is going to be the interim middle school principal at the middle school next year. He's currently an assistant principal at Concord Middle. So I sent out a note to the middle school families and staff, I think, end of last week, last week, about his appointment. The Happy Hollow principal position, we have four finalists for that position. Betsy Gavron led the first round committee. They recommended four finalists to me. Those finalists are going to be in district next Monday and Tuesday, and then the following Monday and Tuesday. I'll be sending out a note either later tonight or tomorrow about which candidate is going to be there on which day. But I provided information about who the four finalists are, short bios, and their resumes.
So a couple more weeks.
My goal is to have that decision made.
Before April vacation?
By April vacation. So the finalist interviews will be on, so they'll spend, for those finalist interviews, they'll spend time in central office, meeting school and central office administrators. They'll spend some time one-on-one with me. And then they'll spend the bulk of the time at Happy Hollow. So they'll be at Happy Hollow. They'll have an opportunity to tour classrooms. They'll spend some one-on-one time with Rachel Scott, assistant principal. They'll spend some time with students. And they'll meet with the faculty after school, with any of the staff members at Happy Hollow. And then there'll be a virtual forum for parents. We want to do a virtual forum to provide the opportunity for as many parents as possible to participate. So each of the finalists will do that. That'll be April 3rd, 4th, 10th, and 11th. And so my hope is to be, to be able to make a decision prior to April vacation. Then we have the interim director of finance and operations, now director of finance and operations. The school committee approved my recommendation this evening. The assistant superintendent, or interim assistant superintendent position. The committee, Allison Mizuguchi, is leading the first round of that committee. They have had, I think, several meetings. And I believe they're in the process of identifying the candidates they wish to interview. Those interviews, I'm not sure when they're scheduled to happen. It'll probably be within the next week or two. I'm doubtful that we'll have a decision made before April vacation. But I'm hopeful that we'll have a decision made on that not too long after April vacation.
I mean, I just, that's an interim position. So that will not be going for the full community, faculty? Like, what's the plan with that position?
So it's a great question. I haven't entirely figured out what I'm going to do. That is a one-year interim position. I'm leaving my options a little bit open on that. That might be something that's a somewhat truncated process. And I communicated that it might be somewhat truncated. But I might leave the option open of doing a little bit more lengthened process.
Involving more input from stakeholders.
Involving more input. Yeah, it's a one-year position. And so I don't want, I don't want to belabor the process. And it's a one-year position. And I also don't want to ignore the fact that it's important to get, you know, people's input. So I haven't 100% decided on that yet. Then we have the interim director of student services position. That position is posted. I'm going to be leading that search process. So I'll be putting together a team in the near future. So I don't, we posted that position. And other than, I'm going to put together a committee in the near future. I don't have more information on that.
Forgive me for not listening perfectly. How many candidates are there in Allison's search?
So we have agreed that we're not going to talk about how many candidates there are for any one position. That was one of the things. In each of the interview committees, we've agreed that Vegas rules apply and that we don't talk about what happens in the committee for a variety of different reasons.
So you get to the finalist stage, get it?
Until we get to the finalist stage. Then we have, so the interim director of student services, I just mentioned. There's also an assistant director of student services position. That's not an interim. That position, the first round is being led by Sean Gass at the high school. And he's already put together his search committee. I believe they are in the process of identifying candidates to interview. And I'm not entirely certain what that finalist round is going to look like. We'll certainly have opportunities for a variety of input for the finalists there. That's a position that mostly faces out-of-district. So it's primarily working with families whose children are in out-of-district placements, but also does provide some support within special education in general. So I do want to make sure that I get some different voices involved in that process once we've identified finalists. And that one, in terms of timing, that's also going to be after April vacation. And the interim director of student services is also going to be after April vacation. Having heard the committee discuss tonight the possibility of an acting superintendent for July 1st, one of the things that immediately pops into my mind is the extent to which, if a person is named, how I might be working with that person about these positions as well, knowing that that person would be working with them. So depending upon the timing, I would certainly want to involve them in the decision-making process if possible.
So that's where I was going to, the reason I asked all those questions, was because it seems to me like, I agree with Janie and Jess that it would be nice to meet Midge, right? I, it just seems like a kind of a no-brainer, right? But I also think that certainty in this world that we're in right now has a value. And if we have that many searches that are, that are in play, I guess is the way to put it, I think having some, some certainty, at least for a one-year position, is valuable to that process. I would think, right?
You mean for the, these people interviewing to know that we have something?
Yes, so that they know what the plan is. So that we know that there's a plan and that's what the plan is, right?
I want to be very respectful of the time that the committee needs to take in making a very important decision. Selfishly, the sooner the committee is able to make a decision, the easier it is for me to be working on some things, both in terms of transition and in terms of potentially working with someone on open positions. Yes.
I think also, my assumption would be, you know, people who are finalists are probably thinking, so, like, who am I going to be working with?
So I guess my feeling is that if we're going to do it, we need another meeting because I don't want to wait till...
Oh, you mean to talk, so?
Yeah. That's how I feel.
Until April 1?
I'm sorry.
Our next meeting. She means she...
Our next meeting is April 12.
Oh, I didn't hear. I was, I thought you said April 20th.
April 12 is our next meeting, I think.
Yes. Our next meeting is April 12.
Okay.
So meet with Dr. Connolly.
So maybe meet with Dr. Connolly, maybe make another, have another meeting. Not that we all need another. I mean, I've had three school meetings this week so far. It's Wednesday.
I think she's, um, she's visiting a family member somewhere.
Yes, that's right.
So where, I think she's gone the first week anyway, right?
She's gone next week, yeah.
Yeah.
So that brings us to our...
That's my fortunate.
Yeah.
To the week, the next week.
But, I mean, what we can do is, you know, we can think of different ways that the committee would like to get to know her and think of some ideas. And committee members can bring those ideas forward. And if we decide today to delegate the continued discussion, then those ideas can be brought to Dr. Connolly and we can all, we can figure something out. So we have a plan in place for committee members and other stakeholders to get an opportunity to meet her. That's, that's enough, certainly.
You mean, meet her, like, outside of a school committee?
Or do an interview or whatever, whatever, whatever the case may be.
I mean, I think there's value in us doing it together just because then we can kind of just see how she interacts with the group. And I know we won't all be sitting here, but like, just in general, it's, I think it's important to see how somebody interacts with a diverse group because who you get one-on-one doesn't necessarily equate to who you get in a room of people. And, I don't know. To me, that's just kind of, I think, would be ideal and important, especially for someone to lead our district for the next year.
Is it against the rules for us to do a Zoom meeting?
I think we're still allowed to do a Zoom meeting, aren't we?
I think that in technically, no. Because I'm bringing this up with tech. It expires on March 31st and it hadn't been, as of last week, extended. Did, did you get something?
No, I was looking at, today's the 29th, so.
Yeah, and, but it's, but I think it passed, like, the House and the Senate just haven't passed it in Massachusetts. But I just don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
We would have to check with the town board. Yeah. Because that is a good idea, too. I just want to make sure, because you asked your question. I just want to make sure that it makes sense, what Erin said about how our hands are tied.
Not entirely, but...
We can't really go into it.
I guess not entirely. So I guess there are things that I'm confused about in some ways, but in some ways, no. But I do think that whomever we bring in for the year needs to be, at least at minimum, vetted by all of us. And at that point, like, I do, I really do think, I just don't, I just have a lot of concerns.
I think it's a fair, fair to say that we should all meet her.
Okay. So does someone want to do a, I think we probably need a motion, right?
Well, I guess I'm confused as to what you guys want. Like, are you thinking that you just want us to, like, have another meeting and say, bring her in? Like, or authorize two individuals on the committee to have further conversations and discuss how the three of you can meet her and continue the conversations and discuss how the three of you can meet her, and continue the conversations with respect to contract negotiations?
No, I'm not there yet with contract negotiations. I need to meet her before I would even agree to move her forward.
I just, I guess I'm a little bit concerned with how you see this playing out, as us getting someone qualified into the role.
I don't know.
By July 1st.
I think that...
Especially when there's area people that already have it open, can do it in the open forum, and don't have certain restrictions that we have, and I'm really concerned about that with a tight timeline.
But I don't know, like, based, I don't know the candidate, so I can't say she's qualified beyond what you guys are telling me, and like, I just wanna make sure that it's not just you and Chris saying, "Oh, we like her, we want her," and that it's, like, truly, she's, like, comes in and we're all like, "Yes, awesome."
Well, so, she did provide a resume, which is certainly on target. She was the superintendent for eight years in a similar next-door, peer town. She does have special education experience, which is important in our current situation. You two met her and said she has a collaborative approach. She's willing to do an acting year, a year as an acting person, which is, I think, big. So, I guess, I guess I'm sitting, now, I'm kind of sitting here thinking, because I do understand what Erin's saying, sitting here thinking, what, what would we be able to learn about her by pursuing this process for another round? We do not already know, other than, obviously, when you meet someone, you get a sense of them, right?
Well, and this was a round we didn't talk about as a committee, so this has come to us after it's been in progress, and I definitely have issues with that, so I, like, realistically, like...
I do not have issues with that. I mean, I respect that you have issues with that, but I do not have issues with that. That process doesn't bother me at all. But it, but it does, sorry, Chris, I interrupted you.
No, no, it's fine.
But, but I do, because I think that, you know, there's an exigency, yes, but there's an exigency to the circumstances, so I'm okay with that, right? But I guess I'm sitting here thinking to myself, let's say she came to school committee and we talked to her for 20 minutes, right? What would we be able to learn in that 20-minute conversation that is not already available to us? And maybe, if you have that question, we should ask her that question through our delegates. But I can't sit here, I'm not sitting here thinking, "Oh, I know what I would ask her." The other thing I've found is that, so, interviewing has changed a lot, right? It used to be like, oh, you just got to know the person you talked about, oh, I know they're blah, 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 right, back in the day, but now it's very specific, like, you have pre-prepared questions, and you do them in a, it's, so to prepare the questions ahead of time and get the answers is not out of the ordinary in today's interviewing style. In fact, that's what we did when we hired a permanent superintendent, both times that we hired one, so...
Which is fine, but we didn't come up with a plan or delegate, so it's kind of like new to me, you know what I mean? So today is like the first time we're discussing it, and I...
But it's new to us, it's new to us.
No, I know, but I'm not gonna rubber stamp it and say, like, yes, like, let's just go based on, like, your word that you think she's great, like, I can't do that.
But you understand that we, like, it, there would still be another conver, like, the committee needs to have a final conversation to make a final decision, this is the first conversation.
Yeah, but I'm not ready to go into, like, a contract or anything like that, like, I think we should meet her.
So I guess what I'm asking you, other than your sense of the process, right?
Yeah.
Which, which I respect, what, what would you ask her? Like, let's say we followed another process, I mean, another step in the process, what would you, what would you ask her?
I mean, I would like to know from her mouth, like, how she would work with all the stakeholders in the community, I think that's incredibly important, like, so there isn't this push-pull constantly, like, how is she going to ease parents' minds, ease our educators' minds, and get people to work together versus for their own benefit on two separate tracks? Like, that, I think, is super important for whomever is coming into this role. So I guess that's just one thing I would really like to know how, like, what she can do.
Well, could we, Chris and Erin, would it be possible, I wonder if this would be helpful, to talk to, like, a couple references? I mean, it's public, and perhaps we, she could give us some people we could talk to.
Yep.
But I guess I don't get why we don't wanna talk to her.
No, I'm not saying not, but I'm like, in addition to...
And Jess, just so we're clear, like, you, we can coordinate a conversation that you can have with her, I'm sure she'd be happy.
No, I know, but I'd like it to be, like, more like...
The committee.
The committee.
She wants the committee.
Be able to do it together. I don't want to be the deciding person, like, either, you know, I think it is a group decision, like, we don't have an individual voice, we're one voice together, so...
Right.
I really wanna make sure that what we do is right, that's all.
So, let's just say we, it sounds like we wanna meet her.
Right.
Right, so, but she can't do it next week, is that, is that what you're saying? Which leaves us until the week of our next meeting.
I think we can hash out the details later, I think tonight we just need to figure out a motion of what we're gonna delegate, what level we're gonna delegate.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion that we move forward in the conversation with Dr. Connolly with respect to the acting superintendent position in our district, and that we work out a way for her to meet all of the members of the committee, and that we delegate two members to further the conversation with contract negotiations, that we'll all have to come back to the committee in order to be approved anyway.
I would like to leave out the last part about the contract negotiations until after we've met her. So should I just vote no, or should I?
Erin needs a second.
Yeah, first, Erin.
Yeah, I'm like, before we go forward, I just, I'm trying to figure out.
I am worried about time.
I get that, I mean, I am, and I, I am and I'm not, like, I am worried about somebody in here before July 1st. I am not, like, super, like, I don't feel like the need to rush this and make a poor decision because of time.
Let me ask a question, do we know whether Dr. Connolly has other options that she is considering?
Yes.
She does.
Okay, so, now, we're, that's what I had sort of assumed to that, and so now I'm worried about time. So, if we could do it next week, I would be in, but I don't wanna wait till April 12th. So, I am going to second Erin's motion for that reason.
Okay. So, so Erin's motion's been seconded, so we'll have to do a vote then on it, so...
Just, so, to answer Jess's question, you can either vote no, or you can make, you can make an amended motion, if you want, but then we'd have to vote on that and go back to Erin if it doesn't pass.
Okay, so I'll amend the motion, should I do that, do I do that after a vote?
No, we would have to do it now.
You can amend it.
So I would move to amend the motion, and I would say, just striking to continue negotiations at this time.
Okay, do we have a second on the amended motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, so, the amended motion is Erin's motion, but striking the contract.
Well, aren't we just voting to amend the motion, 'cause it was seconded?
Yeah.
So I'm gonna go with no.
You're, that's your vote?
I'm voting not to amend.
Voting on the amendment.
I'm voting on the amendment, and my vote is no.
It sounds like a town meeting.
I didn't really call.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Sorry, Chris.
We can do a roll call vote, though, so we'll follow your lead there, so, go ahead, Erin.
No.
So are we voting to amend the motion, or on the... We're voting on whether you're, whether we want your amendment to Erin's motion.
Okay.
Then we're gonna vote on Erin's motion.
Okay, so I'm voting yes.
Jeannie?
No.
No.
No. So, now we're back to Erin's motion. We already have a second for it. We'll go around again, and we'll vote on Erin's original motion. Erin?
Yes.
Jess?
No.
Jeannie?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Chris, yes. The next piece would be to figure out the two people we're delegating to.
I'm gonna move that we delegate to Chris and Erin since they were, we did into the pond.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we'll go around again. Erin?
Yes.
Jess?
No.
Jeannie?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Chris, yes. Okay.
But can we be clear on what we're delegating you to do? Sorry.
Sure.
I have to be, so you're going back to Midge to tell her that we're interested in continuing talking?
Yes.
Right, that the committee wants to, before we do, before we can sign anything, or, you know, commit to anything, we all need to meet her.
Yes.
Right? And I would like to add that we should get some references that perhaps we could talk to.
Okay.
And like, that, I don't know if that would help alleviate you, I would be willing to talk to references. I feel that that's an important part of this.
Yeah.
Can I, can I actually, can I actually add to Jeannie's references thing?
Yep.
I'd like to talk to references she gives us, and I'd like to be able to call...
Can you speak up a little bit more?
Sorry, I apologize, I'd like to talk to references she gives us, and I'd also like to be able to call some people that she's worked with in Weston, Justice.
Yep, yeah.
So both of those things.
Yep, all of that works.
I wanna be clear with this, no vote was just because, Chris, you won't be here to work with her next year, and that is why I voted no, it has nothing to do with my faith in anybody.
Yeah, no, I fully appreciate that, you're spot on, I won't be here next year to work with her, but I'm fully committed to the committee and the district and the process, and so I will follow that commitment for the next month. Okay, so I think I've got everything, and then we can also, if anyone has any other ideas of any committee member, if the committee members have any other ideas of ways they would like to engage in a conversation with her, please let Erin and I know.
Perhaps when you talk to her, you tell her that the committee felt it was really important, we know time is, there's, you know, we know time is tight, and what might she suggest as far as being able to meet all of us?
Yeah, I can, we can, we can have that conversation with her. I will say, though, Ellen, to your point about, you know, talking to various people, I do know people who have worked with her in Weston, and I know people who know her through other channels, and there was a lot of very positive feedback.
Yeah, I just, I just, to Jess, the points that Jess has made about her ability to work with people, I think, when you're doing references, it's better, it's, you always wanna call the people they give you, but you also always wanna call whoever, like, is there, you know, whoever she, they work closely.
Sure, yeah, that makes sense, okay. Okay, so, I think we have everything. Any other questions, comments? If not, we'll move forward. Okay. Okay, so, the next item, Acting Superintendent's Updates.
I am gonna have a very brief update, simply to pass it over to Tom. Thank you, Dr. Gray. My bad, I'm sorry.
That was your update?
That was my update. Now that we're up here, they're all stuck. So I'm asking the committee to re-vote the MSBA Statement of Interest motion that you had last, last meeting. I think we might have admitted some of the wording that the MSBA wanted, so I actually typed out the motion in the folder.
And did you just take this from the, that little form, that form, I should say, that little form?
Correct, but I inserted our language in the actual items that we put on, on the Statement of Interest.
So this was, Jeannie, what you were reading last time, right?
Yeah.
And then we decided to populate the form to reread it?
That's 4.1 in the folder.
Oh, I need to sign in again, sorry.
So, you just need us to make a motion, so, which is basically reading us again. Okay, so shall I do that? I move that the school committee resolves, having convened in an open session, I'm sorry, having convened in an open meeting on March 29th, 2023, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the school committee, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated April 2023 for the Clayford Hill Elementary School located at 40 Adams Lane, Wayland, Mass. 01778, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts Building Authority in the future. Such a long sentence. Number two, elimination of existing severe overcrowding. Number four, prevention of severe overcrowding expected from increased enrollments. Number five, replacement renovation or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts, Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Town of Wayland to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. I think we need a second.
Sorry, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? No one's opposed, motion passes.
Agreed.
Thank you. Just for the committee's knowledge, this will be on the Select Board Agenda on April 10th. I don't know if anyone needs to attend that meeting.
I don't think we did last year. I think, I think they just did it, but we could ask, maybe, Chris, you could ask Cherry if they want us there.
April 10th, Select Board Meeting?
She confirmed that meeting date to me directly. Is there one, Monday?
I can tell you that last year, she said, "Oh, they wanted to change the English," and I said, "Oh, no, you can't do that."
I've actually given them the exact same call, I typed out for them.
Okay, great. All right, Perry, is that, that's the update, right?
That is my update.
Okay, thank you, Tom, thank you, Perry, much appreciated.
Absolutely.
Financial matters are actually, 5.1, we're skipping that, we'll do that at our next meeting, is that the plan?
Correct, yes.
Okay, cool. 5.2, Discussion and Vote to Appoint Adjustments to FY23 Entitlement Grants.
So as the committee is aware, that we received the first tranche, or the first installment of our entitlement grants, it's based on last year's enrollment numbers, the Department of Education actually edits these and adds more funding depending on our October 1 enrollment submission, so what I'm asking you to do is just approve the increases. The SED IDEA 240 grant was increased by $3,162 to a total of $711,310. The Special Ed Early Childhood 262 grant was increased by $54 to a total of $14,030. Title I grant was increased by $86 for a new total of $60,175, and the Title II A 140 grant was increased by $281 to $30,169.
Do they ever go down based on enrollment? Just curious.
We're still working diligently on figuring out how we're gonna spend that $86 from enrollment.
That one's correct.
Just so you know. If you had a question, we'll figure it out then.
We'll spend it all in one place.
So they never go down, they only go up?
They adjust for whatever enrollment.
Yeah, they... Okay. So you need a motion for us to approve them?
Correct.
Well, I'll just do that, how about? I move to approve the adjustments to the FY23 entitlement grants, 240, 262, 305, and 140, as presented.
Second.
Second, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? No one's opposed, everyone's in favor, motion passes. All right, great, thanks, Tom. So Administrative Matters, Discussion, Possible Vote to Appoint a School Committee Member to be the Liaison to the Route 20 South Landfill Visioning Committee. So the Visioning Committee is meeting maybe next week, I can double-check the date, but what I realized when the information went out to have the meeting is that the prior, Kim Reichelt was the liaison, and she's no longer on the committee, so I'm asking if anyone else on the committee is interested in being the liaison to this Route 20 South Landfill Visioning Committee, which, basically, the background of this is, the space that's, if you're going, if you're on Route 20 going towards Sudbury on the left side, the town, Wayland Town Dump is on the right side, and on the left is the old Wayland landfill, and there's conversations about what to do with that space, and when they formed this committee, they asked about having a representative from the school committee, for various reasons, partially because I think maybe one of the items on the conversation had to do with school bus parking, right? So, probably doesn't make sense for Jeannie or I to be the liaison to this, so... So probably doesn't make sense for Jeannie or I to be the liaison to this, so I don't know, anybody else is interested?
I'll do it.
Erin? Okay, great. So someone want to make a motion for?
I move to appoint Erin as our school committee liaison to the Route 20 South Landfill Visioning Committee.
If second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes.
They don't meet that often, do they?
No.
Yeah.
No, they don't.
How long has this committee existed?
Well, I know Kathy Steinberg was, Kathy Steinberg was our original president.
It was since the parking, it was since the parking crisis.
Oh, that long? Oh, I did not realize that.
Kathy, and then when she rolled off, Kim took over.
Okay.
We can reassign one.
Yeah.
We have more members to.
Yeah.
To disperse, yeah, totally. All right. Discussion update of the Wayland Board.
Wait, sorry.
Yep.
Will you send me whatever the info is in the meeting for next week?
Sure. And I, I feel like it's, I'll forward it to you. It may not be next week. I just remember when I saw the email, I was like, oh, wait, yeah, we need a new person for that.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay. Update of the Wayland Board Member for the, the Education Collaborative. Jeannie, do you want to talk about this? Because you've had this.
I do, I put it on the agenda.
Great.
So there's a, well, there's a couple of things. Doesn't it also say tech update? Yes. Discussion and update, so.
Oh, okay.
So the first thing that Tom nicely uploaded just before the meeting started was the proposed FY '24 budget for tech, the Education Collaborative. And if you look at the, as Jess called it, the really pretty one, was the slide proposal. So basically, in our last meeting, which happened to be my last, what, last week is, they proposed the budget, which they do every year, and it has to come back to the district. We don't have to vote on it, but we all have to, you guys just have to see it. And I will just give you a cup, so, so the slides actually are a good kind of summary of it. But just so the public knows, a couple of really interesting points. So, sorry. The, the budget is about a little over $11 million. It's for 95 students at the Education Collaborative. It's an increase in 8.3, of 8.3%, which is really high. But the collaboratives, there's a law that you can only have a certain amount of accumulated surplus, and so they needed to spend down their surplus. And they used it, they used it to, for part of their salary increases this year. The member district total assessment is the same. And so basically, on page three of the slides, if you look at it, it's just, it's a really interesting slide, I think. So it costs Wayland approximately $11,887 a year. It depends how many kids you have there. I think our assessment is slightly higher, but it's around $12,000. And what we get for that is tuition rate savings for kids that go to the collaborative schools. So it's a 26% to 30% savings as compared to out-of-district placements. We get 80 free online courses that, and I think that Wayland participates in a high number because they, TECA is associated with them. We participate at no cost in the Cooperative Purchasing Program, the Tech Student Data Privacy Alliance Service, and professional development for our staff. So those are just some highlights of some of the things that we get by being a member of tech. So anyway, that is the budget, and the whole budget's in, in your folder too. The thing is that the budget is going to be voted on May 12th at their next meeting. We need to have a representative, and I will be, have rolled off of the committee by then. And that was their biggest concern, really. Not me leaving, but having someone to vote the budget.
Oh, yeah.
No, I don't know if that was it, but, but they asked it, but if we could at least have a temporary person assigned to be the tech representative, you know, that we could always reassign later, as Jess said, once, you know, the new members roll on. But someone basically who could attend the May 12th board meeting. And the tricky part is, they've been on Zoom up until this point, and as long as they can still do Zoom meetings, it will be via Zoom, but right now it's in person because that law hasn't been extended. And it's at 8:00 AM on May 12th in East Waffle.
I was going to say, I could do it, but, no, not at 8:00 AM.
I know, I know. I'm a little worried.
I can figure it out. I'll get, if I can get somebody to take Marcus to school, I can.
Are you sure?
I'm sure I can get someone to take him.
I can fill you in on the stuff, and I can also let you know if you don't, virtual, which is easy.
Yeah.
You drive him to middle school?
Yeah.
I can take him.
Thanks.
Okay, great. So I'm gonna, I will put you in touch with a person who's Chair of the committee. Her name's Nancy Gallivan. She's the Waffle School Committee Chair. And say that at least temporarily.
Yeah, I'll do it for reference.
Okay.
We'll, we'll, we'll cover it.
Good, cool.
Okay.
Great.
It's a really great organization. As you guys know, I think so. Which kind of segues into your next thing on the agenda.
Yes. I put the letter in the folder, actually, I shouldn't say that. Diane put the letter in the folder. From the Accept Collaborative. So I just wanted to give everyone a chance to see it. So as you probably recall, there was an application to become members of the Accept Collaborative that the district sent to accept. And as you can see from this letter, they, they're putting our request to become a member on hold. So the sense that I got from them is that they're, you know, they're interested in working with us, they want to put it on hold, and so we should try again, you know, next time. But probably if you have like really specific questions about this, the best person to speak with, I mean, certainly, I don't know, Perry, if you want to chime in on, on this, I don't mean to take over the conversation, but another person who could help would be Dr. Cataldo. I agree, so, yeah.
Do you have a sense, like, next year when we have all these interns, if they would be willing to, I mean, I guess you don't, do you not apply again?
I don't think they will. I don't think, the sense I got from talking with BJ was that we need a little bit more stability.
Before?
Yeah, I mean, in the letter, they said, you know, requires participation, you know, from the various administrators.
They had said when we went that they, you know, they expected attendance at meetings and all of that stuff, so. And it was, like, all the superintendents from their districts were all there, and so I think that's really important to them, to make sure it functions properly, which I fully understand.
Yeah.
It's very similar to tech. I think it's very similar to tech. And it would be great for us to join because, I mean, you see the benefits you get from tech.
Yeah, and it's like 10 minutes away.
Yeah.
Right.
It's a lot closer, which is even better.
For the kids, like.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
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 It would be great to join.
Definitely.
So hopefully, fingers crossed.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be fantastic. Okay, moving on to Policy Matters. Jess?
Okay, so.
Well, you guys weren't.
So we didn't get to meet, but can we skip 7.1, 7.2, and 7.3?
Yep.
And Erin, I hope you're okay with this, and if you're not, just stop me. So I'm not going to ask for any vote, but for 7.4, there are an extensive amount of edits that MASC has made. I got them in the mail, but not in my email, which is strange, but it's literally like a packet like this of policies that we need to just edit to reflect the changes. Exactly.
They're like what their usual, where they go through and they make the little edits.
They have them somewhere, but I.
I was on policies at one of these.
If you want me to find them, but there are a lot.
I just assumed it, it's just the usual MASC things where they add.
Yeah, so I didn't know if there was a way that we could easily do the changes and bring them to, to approve versus going through each individual, like, word that was modified by MASC. Well, when, how do we?
Just because MASC modifies them doesn't mean we have.
Or is there some that they?
There's some to accept them, doesn't it?
No, but I think there are some that we might want to.
Okay. So. So maybe we should discuss them and then bring them the ones that we think make the most sense?
Well, I guess it was more, yeah, I wanted to do that and like kind of break them down with you and figure out like, okay, I'll go through and make these, and you do these, and then we could just bring them all back. But I, I don't want to sit here and say, okay, now, like, we've changed this to this or whatever.
Well, could you make like a red line?
That's what I was wondering, what is easiest?
I think it's easiest, I think what we've done before is if you can like redline the changes and then upload them, then we can see what little things, because if their policies were just like a couple of words or, there was at one point where they had to add a phrase after, you know, all the protected classes.
Yeah, I think there are things like that.
And so, and then it's just in there and we can just like go through and say, yes. Yeah.
Yeah, I just didn't want to make it complex, that's all, so.
I'm just thinking now that it's like online, with how we make changes, I'm not sure.
How do we do it?
How do we make the red lines?
I think we pull them.
We might have to make separate documents.
I think we make a separate document.
You can probably, if it's online, can't you just like pull it down into like a Google Doc?
It's in a Google Doc.
Right, but can't transfer it to a Word Doc?
Right.
I think you can transfer it to a Word Doc.
And then make red lines, so there'll be separate Word Docs, maybe we print them and then scan them as a PDF.
And then you have to upload them back.
Well, then upload them.
Yeah.
So then we can just upload them to the.
Right, but we can't upload them into the policy manual.
No, no, no.
We have to have them, right? You know what I'm saying? So like print them as red lines, scan them in.
No, there has to, we'll find an easier way for that. There has to be an easier way.
Okay, so I have to tell you, when I do these executive session minutes, when you go, if you go to the office, that Xerox machine, if, if you print them out, you just put them all in one big pile and you hit scan and Diane's name, and it just goes to her.
Oh.
Like you don't have to separately scan like you do at home, is what I'm thinking.
Oh, that sounds like.
Yeah, it's just one big PDF. That's why like the executive session minutes are one big PDF, because I sit there and I put them in and they go right to Diane.
All right.
So.
All right, so that doesn't sound just terrible. So we'll start working on those at some point and bringing them back at some point. And then the last part, just again, following up, if there are any suggestive policies that you all have that you would like for us to review at upcoming meetings, we are happy to. I will be looking at, what is it, class size soon? If anybody has any input, please share it, because we need to add TCW to that.
That was, that was the one that I was going to suggest is the class size policy, taking a look at that. And I know it's a big undertaking, but I think it's worth a discussion in terms of, just off the top of my head, I don't remember exactly what it is, but even at like sort of the lower elementary level, if there's a way to, you know, tweak class size so it's a slightly smaller number in terms of the maximum limits, I think there's benefits to that. However, I recognize the constraints, most specifically physical building size.
That's what I think.
So, I think it's, but I think it's worth a conversation, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
Worth a discussion.
I think as part of that conversation, we should have projections on, in terms of enrollment, because I think we are, we are doing a lot of building here in Wayland, and we could end up with enrollment changes that we do not want to constrain, have those conflict with whatever we did with class size.
Well, we had that McKibben, Tom, did we get an update from Mr. McKibben this year? No.
I was wondering when we're due for one of those. That's what was going to be my next question.
I wondered that.
Because isn't it from 2018?
Well, I wonder if it fell through the cracks a little, because Susan used, after it was done, used to touch base with Mr. McKibben, because I can't remember his first name, and get, and he would update it, you know, for us based on things. And I'm wondering if it maybe just hasn't happened the last two years because we didn't pass on that info, then it should be done, so.
Yeah, because I, and also if there are bubble classes coming.
Well, like the fifth grade this year.
Yeah.
It's a big one.
So maybe, if you're going to look at it, it's obviously not going to change this school year. But I wonder if maybe as one of the things when Susan comes back, we could ask her, or you guys could ask her, work with her on updating that, getting that updated. Because it's, I feel like it seems a hard thing to ask Tom to do since he wasn't involved in the report. And, right, Tom, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
If you have the last one, forward it to me and we'll take a swag out of it.
Okay. Well, I'll forward it to you.
Sure. Anyway, all I'm saying is it should be part of any class size discussion.
Yep.
Yep, yep.
And what building, do we know what, like, we don't even know what buildings are going to build, right?
Right, that's all, all MSBA thing, yeah.
But again, I think a school committee member should be on those. I again think that like a school committee member should be on any of those committees that are formed to talk about residential developments in town so that we can be a part of the conversation and share our information about the size of our schools and our capacity and what this will look like.
So I think that's something that you guys just have to keep on top of, for lack of a better word, with the Select Board, like, when that comes about.
And I, I do talk to the Chair of the Select Board about that item and that issue. So it is like a constant, it's always on the radar.
Yeah.
But you're right, the schools do need to be part of that discussion.
Yeah, because we don't want to do what happened to Claypit this year in the fourth grade, right, where they ended up with giant classes.
Right.
And we just, and also the whole proposal that we need to build new schools is directly connected to that, so the Select Board, you know, should be well aware. I mean, I can't imagine they're not aware of that.
Okay, great. Consent Agenda?
The Chair, 0.2 is not in the folder, about staff illness, so we can get in there.
Oh, the warrant? All right, Ellen, I mean, sorry, Ellen, Erin's going to roll her eyes at me.
No.
But, yes, you will.
No.
So I had a couple edits to the, the budget hearing presentation, the write-up of it, and I am happy just to give it to Diane. I can tell you guys what they are, but I just like added a little detail. So like when we said a 6% increase, I wrote in parentheses, 8.3% adjusted, because that's what we presented, and I think it's important to have that in the minutes because, to have the apples to apples. I also, I think that the, the first cut we made wasn't at the request of the Finance Committee, it was just the town. I just had a couple of things like that. So I'm happy to go through them, but I also listened down like to Diane. What do you guys want?
I think those are really important, Jeannie.
Yep. So we can just, you know, approve it with the amended for those changes?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Is that okay, Diane? Okay.